Complete paving, I will start any day now and then sweeping is in the queue, but we don't. I I I hope they're not just working on the weekends because it would never get done, but um sweeping's on the way. Moving on to uh uh technology, I did order a few more PCs and monitors. Uh we should be all set to finish out that hardware purchase program uh for the next year. Uh in July, as soon as we get that new fiscal uh new fiscal year. After that, we'll be transitioning to the cloud-based file storage and productivity software. And I did begin a trial um begin a trial of um Office three sixty-five and. Uh we're getting close to having that stuff kind of packaged up and we're making a decision in the next couple of months. Uh let's see, we're nearly full uh as far as summer staffing. Uh and Jen uh is starting to get into a lot of activity for the beach and heritage days. Uh she did a great job managing a group of volunteers for the uh day of caring uh with middle school kids. I also wanted to thank the other staff that were involved with that. Um Matt Seams um helped direct some some students as well, so we had. Uh and Melissa had a group with the library, so we had a good good representation of of uh volunteers helping out uh with that stuff. Uh and then uh grant reporting for the sidewalk project is up to date. Uh that basically means the reimbursement requests and the uh reporting about activities. Uh we're we're all set through um through March. Uh and then uh in June, we'll get the next quarter, so we build it basically on a quarterly basis. Uh and then uh solid waste and recycling was uh we have a few things going on. We had a great uh meeting uh last week. Uh and sorted out a few things uh looking at it, trying to clarify. Uh and make it easier for towns to engage and participate in that because it is a shared um. Uh kind of resource that we we work with they had and Wayne on and we'd like them to be engaged. The household hazardous waste collection day is on uh Sunday, July thirteenth. That's from nine to noon uh and pre-registration is required for that. So I just want a few people to know that um uh we will accept household hazardous waste. Uh this isn't for business waste unless you you know uh have a uh something to determine with E D E P in advance, but. Um we will accept a lot of different items, uh check with Karen, check the flyer uh beforehand and make sure you pre-register. And then um uh summer hours will start at the uh transfer station on June first. Uh so that's with the uh the Sunday hours eight to noon. And then uh I've been working on some professional development training to finish up my certified manager uh requirements, uh which um. Uh I'm glad to be able to do that, it's a nice way for me to um you know stay on top of my skill set. And uh you know, stay engaged professionally. And after ten years with the town, I think it's about time that I got that taken care of, so. Uh that's my town manager's report. Any questions or anything you'd like to add or ask about?
Right, sounds good.
Moving on to treasurer's report, um uh month of April, everything looked good. Uh no, no issues, um the budget is completed, it's nice to be able to put that in uh in the report. Uh no changes uh till till we start again next October. Uh the audit, we are working on uh pre-audit uh activities that pulling information together, signing paperwork. Uh and that's for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five audit, that's the one that ends this June. Um but I just want the board and the public to know that we do this uh and we're getting ready to to get started with that next audit. Uh as far as comments go, um really uh things are are pretty stable. Um this report does cover the month of April is noted. Uh we should be about eighty-three percent for revenues and expenditures. Uh real estate payments are down for the month and up for the year-to-date. Uh it's a bit unusual, uh real estate's actually down um uh about twelve percent. Um which is more than more than I would have expected. Uh excuse me, it's only down seven point seven percent, there was something else that was up. Um but uh still, uh that's a big drop month over month, I'm not sure exactly why. Uh but we're still on track for the year and that's that's a positive thing. Um uh people are are kind of odd about how they make payments, um especially when they're not with a mortgage company, so sometimes. Uh people will just hold on to money for a while uh and make two payments at once, but uh we'll see what happens there. Uh motor vehicle revenues are up slightly for the month um and then moderately for the year-to-date, so we are seeing a bit of a slowdown there. Uh but uh we expected that and then total receipts are down significantly for the month. Um and are just under target for the year-to-date. And that total receipts number is the number that was down by by double digits, fourteen point four percent. Um so again, I think a lot of that does have to do with the real estate. Um uh but uh that should pick rate back up again. Uh and then uh everything else really looks to be on track for the for the quarter um through through April or through um uh not the quarter. Yeah, through the month of April. And that's my treasurer's report, I'm happy to take any questions.
I'll just point out that all of the report is available online, including the journal entries and. Um all the receipts and revenue summaries and quite a bit of detail, so anybody who wants to see that information, it is all there. We will now move on to. I think we are up to the community services report, so we'll we have Karen here, so we'll do the cemetery first. And we have Grace.
Yes. You can assess if needed as well. Hello, I'll play second fiddle to Grace. Anyway, uh first before, I I know I uh put a report together, a written report for you all to look at um. Prior to that, I just want to thank you, um thank Eric in particular and and the select board for supporting me to be the sexton again. Um I always enjoy doing it, last time I retired. Um but now, here we are again, so it's good. And in case anybody didn't know this, I'll let you know officially that um certain. There's a bit of knowledge that's not correct, that there's a certain profession that people say is the oldest profession in the world. But in reality, written documents go back like two hundred years prior to that, that show cemetery sextons as the oldest profession. So here we are, continuing on with the tradition.
We learned something new tonight, that's great.
So um are there any questions about, I mean, it's it's we're at the end of the fiscal year, so I'm really just trying to. Try and get get everything done that that the committee had had, you know, put forth to to accomplish this year, so we're really. Working at it hard, um but as you can see, there's a few things that are being planned. I don't know if you have any questions about that, and the big thing that uh o- over and above that as well too, and I don't want to want to make official um. Kind of statement on this, that the maintenance guys are doing an incredible job in the cemeteries. I thought that we were going to have a hard year getting things mowed to begin with, given the the way that the weather's been. Um but they've been doing a great job with that and things will be looking good for Memorial Day, which of course, as we all know, is this weekend. So, that being said, any questions on?
I just said one, I just wondered if you've had uh any work quotes or we're starting the process about that tree that is a problem?
Yeah, in fact, I've got somebody lined up to take it down, um I've got Andrew Pullen, Pullen Tree.
Yep.
Lined up to take that down, um so we can get that done um. Obviously before, before the end of the fiscal year.
Yep, perfect.
For that, and um then we, Grace and I today went to Longfellow's greenhouse. And we specked out a few nice decorative trees for replacement trees. Um because as you as you all know, well, I don't think you were involved in any East Reed Field tree, yes you were Dave, in one of the original, the big old East Reed Field.
Yeah.
But the ones bordering Plains Road, they've been slowly having to come down. And we've done some plantings over the years, the cemetery committee. Um but we want to plant a little more um like have trees, people like trees around cemeteries, so uh but we're our intent is not to. Obligate future two hundred years from now, one hundred and fifty years from now, people saying what we're in their minds to plant these big trees here and look at all the stones are getting wrecked. So we're looking at things that are more um like a a a hemlock, was no, not hemlock. Hawthorn, Hawthorne, Dave?
Going to say, uh loo- look at uh the the biggest mistake people make plant trees is. Is it fits the area when it's six feet tall, but look at the mature growth of the tree, so.
Exactly.
You see people plant these abovites on the corner of their steps all the time, they're six feet tall. They don't take into consideration that an abovite will grow forty feet tall and forty feet wide.
In no time flat.
Good plan, you know.
Yeah.
The Hawthorn's not going to be the size of an oak tree, so.
So that's part of what we're thinking too, and also, I mean, the the. You know, they've got nice flowering, they've got nice different types of leaves and all, I mean, everybody loves maple leaves, I'll.
Nobody will run up and grab a hold of them and pull them out of the ground, because the thorns are like this long.
Yeah. So, so we should do okay with those, um and and also is is I'm sure perhaps you've read in the report, I know you've got a quite a packet this time around. Um that we're working on obtaining uh basically some funding, I said grant, I think, but it's not really a grant, but some funding through the Torsey Memorial Church. Um to help offset the costs on those. That'll be nice if we can get that done. And of course, we'll I'll work with DigSafe and all, I don't think there's any utilities right there by the cemetery, but by law, we have to do these kind of things.
I'll mention one thing that came up on candidates night, Sean, you probably heard this, I think you were there then, um our next select board member who's running for the unopposed seat. Rebecca Lambert has a real interest in um working with you as sexton and the committee at large at doing something to digitize the cemetery plots in town.
Oh.
Which we had talked about probably ten or more years ago.
Been an ongoing, yeah, right, discussion.
Um she has a real interest in that, so she's she actually thought that um that might be something she sets as a goal for us in our retreat this summer. We were sort of having a back and forth conversation at that time. Um so I just thought I'd bring that up, that you have someone coming in on this level who will support your work in trying to do that. Um and of course, I understand, I think all of us do, that that would require funding. Um you know, but to let the history be more accessible to people and a lot of people have relatives in Reed Field who live all over the world. Um and can't come here to see the sites and um to learn the history of the neighbors and the town and so on, so. That might be in your future, I'm sure she'll get in touch with you guys and see.
Good.
You know, what's been done and what she might be able to do or we could do to help in making more of that come alive.
And also, um if if the, I know in 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 the past, pardon me, that. Uh the select board uh occasionally toured the cemeteries or a cemetery at a time, I mean, you know, time is valuable for everybody, for all you guys. Um but if that's something you'd be interested in too, the cemetery committee talked about that a little bit today, to say that we'd offer, you know, any time for. Even to just go to one particular cemetery and spend an hour or so walking around.
We had planned to do that before Andy passed away.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
And I think one of the things that we had talked about with him, maybe at a budget committee meeting, um was that we could tour one or two cemeteries, but then he was going to. Go to the others and take some photos, so we could sit together and look at the photos and. Sort of see what the history is and maybe what some of the issues are.
Sure.
Um without having to actually go and visit them, but getting out there and hearing things like, I think, Jaren, you and I both ended up at the. Uh one in town, the corner cemetery last year when they were repairing the stones. Is that you?
Me.
Is it you? Somebody went, anyway, uh it's just fascinating.
Maybe nobody was there.
You know, was this during the evening hours, because you know, I mean, they've been.
No, um but you know, the repair work that that you folks do and just the age of some of these stones that we have custodial um care for. Um is is very incredible.
Yeah.
And the history is is.
We've got a whole, I mean, we've got an old town and it's amazing, you just walk in some of the old parts of cemetery and it's obvious that that's it's an old town.
Right?
You know, so it's good that way, and then one other thing, if if there's no other questions too, um I just want to address. I know there could be an issue with people perhaps thinking that, well, gee, she's she's the transfer station manager and she's paid for a full time to do that. And then now we're going to pay her to do the s- the sexton duties as well again. Um and I want to make it clear that this is not, this is not any type of double dipping at all, that if I ever have to. Leave um the transfer station to take care of anything in cemeteries, literally, it's a in my policy is I'm I'm clocking out, I clock out there. I take care of the cemetery sexton that I'm already paid for under the stipend, then when when and if I come back to the semi, um I'm sorry, back to the transfer station. Then I clock back into the transfer station, that did happen once this year with one of the Kent Hill Day of Caring. Um I don't, I I ended up having to go up there to work with them for, I think, three hours in the afternoon and and it was a Thursday, so. We're only open to the commercial guys then, but literally I clocked out then and so I just want to make that clear too as well, that um. You know, again, I appreciate the opportunity and and um I'll work hard for the town and I'll certainly earn the money in both regards. Um but it's not a, we're not working them simultaneously.
And I'll just reinforce that, that this board was informed by Eric that when you were hired to be the sexton, they were separate jobs.
Yep.
With separate duties and separate times that they would occur and not overlap, and we were all in agreement and approved of that.
And there's not, although this one did overlap, it's not, it it's a rarity that these kind of things would happen, I mean, if. You know, if there's an issue with the burial, death can't be planned and I may have to run off for for half hour, an hour, forty-five minutes or whatever, but I don't anticipate that happening often at all, so. Yeah, just to clarify that as well too, so we all understand.
Any questions for Karen? Welcome back.
Excellent, thank you. Glad to be back again.
And yes, Grace, you and Karen are welcome to leave if you'd like.
Well, I just wanted to say one thing.
Oh, that's good too.
I I don't usually talk, but um I would like to thank you again for the awards, that's totally unexpected. But I did want to relay the fact that the cemetery committee was just thrilled to have Karen back. She has so much knowledge about past dealings with the cemeteries and, you know, it's just great for our committee. And so, but publicly, I'd like to thank you for stepping up again.
Well, and I think we all agreed when Eric presented to us this proposal that we were um pleased to have someone do it who isn't going, it's not tied to their employment in the town. So that if they leave their position in the town, then we also lose the sexton. Um because we've been having some turnover with that, and that's not really good for the committee. Um and it's not as good for the continuity in the cemetery care.
Not at all, not at all, for the cemeteries and keeping it forever.
Right. So you can't retire again, that's what it all comes down to.
Okay, thank you all.
You're welcome, thanks. Okay, why is it when I click on a tab, it won't open? I don't click hard enough, okay, um.
That's the wrong click.
Evidently, yep. Oh, thank you. So we had a written community program and coordinator update in the uh packet and it was very thorough, she talked about uh Reed Field U. And about swim lessons and baseball and about the field work that Sean.
Details.
Thanks for um and the day of caring, um and that she's also starting to work on heritage days, so that's really the update. Um been very busy and I think doing a wonderful job for our town.
For sure.
I would like to let you know that I was in O'Reilly's on Saturday Auto Parts in Augusta and Winthrop has their. Old home days, maybe is what they call it, on July twenty-sixth, and their flyer is already up. And I know we've talked in the past about um advertising more widely than we have been, and I think that would be perfect to start getting a flyer up in the next couple of weeks. Doesn't have to have anything more than, you know, the the bold outline, letting people know it's happening on this weekend and there are these kinds of things happening. Um but we should get it out in the bigger towns, then we'll have more people come and enjoy some of the things Reed Field has to offer, maybe they'll move here. So. Okay, just my suggestion. Okay, moving on, boards, committees, commissions and departments, we had minutes come in. From the Board of Appeals, the Budget Committee, the Conservation Commission and the Open Space Working Group, both draft and approved minutes, and we thank everybody for that. These are available online for folks to read and stay informed. Any comments or questions? At this time, I'd like to invite Bruce, we're going to come up, he would like to speak with us concerning the Open Space Committee.
I'll be brief, but I first want to say every time I come to one of these meetings, I learn a couple of things. So first of all, I thought when we hired you, it was going to be ten months to get that certification, not ten years. And certainly a joke. And secondly, I will try my hardest not to die when the transfer station is open, just to help the town.
He's not going to what?
Die. Die. When the transfer station is open. So Karen can stay at the transfer station for that time.
Okay, oh.
Or or maybe that's where I'll be interned, I don't know.
I'm there now, caught up.
The Open Space Committee has. Um. Someone. Or after, I'd love to meet, boy, they're really not moving along as fast as we thought. And it's true, we've been um pretty detailed, it is a very active group in the sense that they all have other obligations. Because they're representing other committees and entities in town, uh every single uh member. So we're not going to get our work done by the end of our term on July thirtieth, no, excuse me, June thirtieth. Um so I um, we we've discussed this and I'm coming before the board tonight to ask for an extension of four months. Um to complete our work, uh we do have a plan, we think we can uh accomplish that uh during four months. The, we've actually kind of done this without any financial or, you know, consulting support, I mean, I suppose it could still be some small. Uh expense in putting together the final draft or something like that, but nothing major, a lot of volunteer time has gone into this. Um there was some discussion, um not discussion, but just back and forth when I mentioned this, um got this on the agenda for tonight. That maybe uh we'd extend this for a year, I don't think my committee members want that at all. We really would like to be done and we would like to deliver our product that uh by the uh October thirty-first or November first, whichever date uh makes sense for you. Um so we have a lot of material done in terms of uh the rewrite of the original plan. Um we're putting it together into a master document right now, we have a subgroup working on um discussing what mapping we have. We're probably not going to put a lot of maps out there, we're probably going to direct people to more live resources where they can see. Up-to-date information from the state or other various uh resources, that seems to make more sense than have something printed. Um that's, for example, the two thousand six report has a bunch of maps in it. Well, probably all of those are not accurate or relevant anymore. Um so we're hoping that as we produce this uh twenty-five update, then, I don't know, twenty thirty-fives. Um we're looking at mapping resources that are still available from entities that keep them up to date for us. Um so that's kind of where we stand, so that's uh I wanted to to um or talk to this board about that uh very briefly because. Um you're the board that appointed us, um and so I would think if there was to be any extension, and you do appoint people for multiple years anyhow. It would come from uh this board, um not that it's going to be changed, I don't believe too much, but um that's it. Um if you have some questions for me, um I'm more than happy to answer them, um I'm. You don't have to appoint all, reappoint all those members tonight, but all of all the members who are on the committee would stay for the four months. Um and that's really what I want, their names and their work has gone into into this up to up to this date. I would say that we still have um a vacancy um since Andy Andy Tolman passed away um from having the cemetery committee represented in the board. And if um you wanted to talk, I was hoping they would kind of stick around for a second, because of my joke, number one. We certainly would welcome somebody from cemetery committee to participate, obviously, we're not going to ask them to do as much heavy lifting um as possible as we've done uh to date, but um. They'd be able to probably help us out a little bit and making sure that we have aspects that we might have forgotten or overlooked or whatever, that would be in particular. Of particular interest to cemetery committee in that open space, so that's it, any questions?
Maybe. Um does anyone have any questions on the side? Uh so what I had written back to Bruce was that uh we were already aware of the fact that this might not get done on time, and I think we had all been okay with that. We asked for them to do the best job they could, not the quickest. Um wanted it to be thoughtful and precise and something the town would be able to utilize and not cause a lot of angst for any particular group. Um so these people on this committee were appointed for one year, so they need to be reappointed, and I don't think we can reappoint them, right, they have to.
Have to resubmit an application.
Do they have to resubmit, Eric, or? How does that work?
We have, we have due process for that, but.
So we have Kristen get in touch with them and it'll all be taken care of.
Yeah.
That's how we do that, okay. Um all of our appointments to date have been for multiple, for single to multiple years. Um so my suggestion is that we reappoint these folks for another year term with the expectation that they'll finish um by November first. But that way, if something comes up after November first that we need a vote on or we need information for, say, when we're putting the warrant together next spring. Um you could still call on somebody to come and participate. So the the reappointment period would be for a year, but the expected work would not be for that time period. We would, so we couldn't actually, in that same motion, set, you know, we expect the finished product by and give a date.
Do we need to make that two motions, one to extend the committee and one to extend the appointments?
Sure.
It's certainly up to the board where we serve it your pleasure, uh but I think a four-month appointment would be um. Would be more what individual members would prefer.
Should we step by saying, making a motion to extend the, what do we call it, the timeframe or the.
Yep.
Finished product for the Open Space Committee to October thirty-first, you think that's?
Yeah, that's what we're shooting to do.
Second. Any discussion on that, all in favor? That is unanimous.
Do we have to make a motion to extend the? That's what I, or can Kristen just take care of?
Well, so I mean, they they are expiring on on June uh thirtieth, but uh basically, I would just approach it like any other reappointment process, but that would be taken care of at the second meeting in June. After the election, um and you could make a determination now perhaps about um, you know, the length of that reappointment, but I think it makes sense. To to just have it run through the uh length, the length of the appointments run through the length of the committee's charge, which has just been extended to October thirty-first.
Okay, so we'll make sure that's on the agenda for the second meeting in June.
So if they finish late, we're going to have to reappoint them again.
They're not going to.
Which is not, that's a messy thing.
I'm pretty sure what I'm hearing is, we don't want to go any longer, we figured four months is the longest we possibly are willing to do this any longer.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I am running into some vacation and travel and those kinds of issues over the summer, so we're coming into that. Um but we have a couple of subgroups, one on writing and one on on uh maps, and these are two or three people, and they know what they need to do. And we will be monthly over the summer, we will hold a public hearing on a document in either late September or early October. And then we'll bless everything and make any final adjustments and present it to the select board.
In October.
At your second October meeting or, you know, possibly your first November meeting, it would be me coming in or something like that, so.
So then.
The plan.
I think we could simplify this right now and just have a motion to ask Kristen to um open up the appointment to reappoint. Folks to that ad hoc committee through October thirty-first.
I'll make a motion to uh have Kristen reappoint and work on that ad hoc committee through October thirty-first.
Second, motion and second, any discussion, seeing none of us in favor, that's unanimous, there you go.
Uh I appreciate that extra consideration of just doing four months, um as a chair too, that kind of gives me the ability to apply some pressure to. Thank you very much.
Could we count on you to come back in the spring if it need be for the warrant time?
Sure, absolutely, I mean, I.
Okay.
I, you know, I volunteered for this uh committee, uh as a public member, and I'm very happy to um talk about that, yeah.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, moving on, uh we have the appointment of the election officials for the June tenth town meeting. And then it's your turn, Lee, so you don't have to stay all night.
I was due a slate.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the ballot and election clerks as noted on our packet, the names are Greg Dergan, Karen Peterson, Tom Smolke, Kim Whitman.
The names are Greg Dergan, Karen Peterson, Tom Smolke, Kim Whitman, Elaine Kates, Don Elnoack, Lorraine Clark, Braylon Palmer, Grace Keane, Sonia Clark, Catherine Woodson, Steve Woodson, Thelma Parks, Emily Roderick and Alan Curtis.
What page are you on?
No idea.
I found it. Okay, 26. That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, for discussion, I just need to state that, uh, my husband Steve and I will not be able to count anything or certify anything for the town election because I'm a candidate, but we can legally count the school ballots. So we were summoned to do such.
Let me get surgery started. So we, we can't count. I'm like, what? I understand. Not, not in general. You just mean like.
Right. We're not allowed to.
All over.
Right. Uh, so I just wanted to make that clear, um, because that would be a conflict of interest. Any other discussion? Seeing all, none, all those in favor? It is unanimous. All right.
You guys are done with the budget process. Nothing left to do.
Are done. Uh, all business number 25 dash 092, I understand is probably going to be wicked short. Consider the Winthrop Dispatch Services and fees. That'll be Eric and Lee.
True. So we asked for a couple of weeks to continue to work on this and we have done, uh, that. Um, I've had some conversations with a few, uh, elected and appointed officials. But, uh, the, the big news is that we don't have any news yet from Winthrop, uh, excuse me, from Waterville. And I'll let Lee talk about that situation.
We're still waiting on some information from Waterville. The lady that does it has been out of the office doing training. So hopefully this week we'll see something back with them.
Okay. So the suggestion would be to put this on our June 9th agenda.
Correct.
Which is, is that two weeks or three?
It's two weeks, three.
One, two, three weeks. The first of two meetings. It will be Steve's last meeting. That'll be exciting. We can talk about dispatch in that meeting.
Not dispatching Steve.
You can do a double thing.
Is that okay with you, Lee?
That works.
Okay. Well, thank you for staying on top of it. We appreciate it. And, uh, we'll see where it goes.
I will say, Lee, and I've done a little bit of contingency planning on trying to think about what, what happens if we don't get results or don't get the information we need. Because there are a few other pieces of this. You want to make sure the technology's working and all that. Um, so we, we have started to talk about what, what, um, what different alternatives might look like. Um, I don't want to get into detail on any of that, but I just wanted to let you know, we were thinking about it, talking about it. Uh, and this being thorough and thoughtful in our, in our deliberation on it. And we'll bring everything we have back to you on the 9th.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Okay. I'm going to move on then. New business number 25 dash 097. Consider the purchase of a storage container for the Reed Field, now for the rec and community programs. Which I think we just paid for.
Pretty sure I saw that on the word.
Yeah, so did I.
That was a different one, yeah. That was text. That was big text. Uh, that was a trailer for the, um, uh, so the maintenance guys can fit both zero turn mowers on.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so that was a, that was for a tow behind. Uh, this is for a storage container, uh, for rec equipment. So, um, and, and I did have, um, a separate, a different, um, uh, originally I had a different, um, estimate in here, but I updated that today. The one that you have on here now, uh, includes the, um, the passage door. Some people call it a man door, but I just call it a passage door. Um, uh, but, but that does give access through a standard, you know, 36 inch, kind of like what we have in a regular room. A door so that they can get in there, uh, and grab, uh, a, a, you know, sack of basketballs without having to open the very large double doors. But we had great success, uh, with one of these roll off containers for the transfer station for storing materials. Keeps it dry, keeps everything, uh, safe. Uh, you know, there's no rodents. Uh, so it's a, a good solution, uh, cost effective for the amount of material. Uh, and we are finding that the more programs we do, uh, the more things we collect. Uh, so we're starting to see, uh, ice skates and hockey gear show up into the swim, uh, locker, uh, you know, the, into the, um, the beach area. Uh, and a lot of that stuff just doesn't need to be, uh, either in those locations because stuck in the town office is starting to overflow. Uh, we have a lot of equipment that's in people's personal possession and we'd like to get all that back together. Uh, the rec department used to have a portable trailer, maybe 15 years ago, um, on RSU property. And that actually was, uh, was sold. It was before my time, uh, but, um, it would have been nice to still have that, but.
It was rotten too.
It was rotten too.
Yeah, it was not worth it.
Yeah. So it wasn't worth saving, but they had some storage, uh, but then they had none, uh, and it's all been kind of packed in. But again, Jen is really doing fantastic work. Uh, and I don't see that demand going away and they've been asking for this for a while. So I'll just stop talking about the pitch, but basically, uh, we have $17,000 in reserve for rec, uh, activities, rec equipment. Uh, and I think this is one of the best investments we could make, uh, to give them the ability to store and manage their equipment all in one place, uh, and make their, their job easier, make my job easier, uh, and just make programming better.
Just out of curiosity, Eric, where is it going to be?
Uh, we're looking at putting it, uh, by the, um, the old entrance to the transfer station. Uh, so, um, if you go in, there's a gate, um, they'd be able to get in and there's a little pad off to the side there. Uh, and we would have it there. Um, that way they can get to it without too much trouble. Um, and, uh, but it's also not, uh, an eyesore someplace else. So.
So Sean, can we get power to it?
We could, uh, we'd have to be creative because there's a power line that runs there. Uh, my recommendation would be to start off with solar lights and see how that goes. I think in the long term, we might want to look at power, but by the time we get to that point, we might want to think about something more than storage container. But that's, that's just my opinion on it. But we'll start with solar lights and, uh, see what people need.
You could get some battery powered lights that are magnetic, hang them on the wall for the inside.
Yep.
Someone can turn it on, walk with it if they can't see all the way to the back.
Yeah. And they will have those big double doors if they really need to get it and get light, but, um, it, just like, you know, any, uh, garden shed or something, you can almost go in with a flashlight. But we'll, I guess we'll try to get some, uh, maybe some LED strip lights, uh, to go on top and a solar panel to power it. So.
Perfect. It entertain a motion?
Uh, which one are you thinking? The one with the man door?
Yeah, the one with the man door. Yeah. So that's the one that's 4550, uh, with, uh, all, all things included. Uh, and we get free delivery because we, um, had a, a deal from the, uh, uh, one of the conventions I went to, so.
There's not any identifying quote number on it. So you'll have to specify it by something.
The one. Uh, there is a VIN number. I'll undermine it by that. So I'd make a motion to, I authorize Eric to purchase the, uh, stock number of VIN number 714298.8, uh, storage trailer for $4,550.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? This is coming out of the rec funds that you showed us in there.
Yeah. So it has the 17, uh, so that the, I always wanted to show the purpose fit, uh, and the funds of 17,000 that are available approximately. And, uh, I mean, normally I wouldn't bring a smaller expense like this to the board because it just could happen, but, uh, it's very important programmatically. So I wanted to make sure you had a part in the discussion.
A lot cheaper to build in the building.
Oh, exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Great. Well, you made some rec folks very happy. Me too, because I can clear out our basement.
Um, we have five minutes if needed for other business upcoming meetings and future agenda items.
Are we going to have a cake for Steve?
Does Steve want a cake?
The cake, yes, hey.
Will Stevie?
I'm not interested in anything else on that, but some food, a great carrot cake, right? Maybe you can bring something, something here, you know?
You don't want me to bring things?
In a clear glass container. Will Stevie eat cake if we bring cake?
Oh, Steve will always eat cake.
Oh, okay.
I don't care.
Okay. So June 9th, everybody remember to show up. We can all take credit for that.
Wow.
Well, maybe when I won't eat meat.
I'll make a motion to adjourn on that now.
Uh, all those in favor? It is unanimous and we are adjourned at 7:27.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's the record.